We're gonna go ahead and get started. Appreciate everybody being here. We're gonna ask Johnny if he will, Lee, send a word of prayer before we start.
That was the place. Father Lord, we just thank you for today. We just thank God for the opportunity that you've given us to serve this great city. And Father, I just pray tonight as we make decisions that affect our city and our residents of it, Lord, I just pray you would give us wisdom at discernment, Lord. I thank you for my board members. Thank you, God, for all the people who are elected to serve and do community service for our city, God. Thank you for our employees and their families. God, I pray that you'd just be in the midst of us tonight, that you'd just forgive us where we sin and the mistakes that we made. Father, in Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. Thank you, God. Okay, first off, U.S. Census Bureau. We're gonna let you just stand there or sit where you are, wherever you want to do it.
Again, my name is Brenda Mabaha. I'm a partnership specialist with the United States Census Bureau. And tonight, I want to talk to you about the 2020 census that's coming up. The census will be, the official census date is April 1st, 2020. And we know the census was mandated by the Constitution to be taken every 10 years. So that 10-year time period has quickly come upon us. And so what we do as partnership specialists, we talk to city organizations and community organizations and businesses about the census because we want to count everyone once and only once where they live. And so in order to be able to do that, to get a complete count of the community, we ask trusted voices like yourself to help us get that complete count, get the word out about the census, about the importance of the census. And the census, as you know, it affects reapportionment of Congress. In 2000, Mississippi had five representatives. In 2010, Mississippi had four representatives. So we lost one representative, state representative. And we are projected not to gain a seat after the 2020. But as I stated, that is a projection. That's why we want to make sure that we get a complete and accurate count of every community. The census is also, data is used for reapportionment of funds. Over $675 billion are at stake for distribution for states from the census based upon the census data. So if Mississippi does not count everyone, if each person not counted, Mississippi could stand to lose over $2,000 for the next 10 years. So that's until 2030. Also, the census is, data is used for redistribution. So you all are very familiar with that, the drawing of the lines in state, local, and federal government. So that data is very important, and it's very important to get a complete and accurate count so that that data can be utilized to draw lines correctly in those communities. Also, in the census information, we have in your packet on the left side of that first sheet, that's there basically states some of the information I've given you. It also states how the census will be conducted in 2020. The census will be conducted via the internet. Now, some people may not have internet, they may not have a smartphone, they may not have a computer in their household. So the census has taken that into consideration as well. One way to alleviate that problem is partnering with libraries, other agencies that may have computers or a computer lab that are willing to allow the communities to come in and complete their census questionnaire that way. If that is not the case, if someone does not want to complete their questionnaire via the internet, they can call an 800 number and complete it over the phone. If they do not, if the household does not complete the census count via the internet or over the phone, we will send out a reminder. The first reminder will just be to let them know that we're still awaiting their questionnaire response. The next will contain a paper questionnaire and give them the opportunity to send the paper questionnaire back in. If the household does not send the paper questionnaire back in, then we will have enumerators or what some people call census takers to go door-to-door to complete that census questionnaire. And we are, the households, over 95% of households, if you look on that fourth sheet, 95% of households will receive their census invitation in the mail. What about the other 5%? Well, the other 5% may either be a household that's been subjected to, for a door-to-door, or it may be a household that does not receive mail at their physical address. If a household receives mail at the post office, census, postcards will not be sent out to post office box. It has to be a physical address. Also, you see on that third sheet, there's a timeline, March 23rd, it will be the time when we'll start the mailouts for the self-response, and then we'll go through name for any follow-up or non-response to households. And also, the census information is confidential. So that's another way that trusted voices like yourself can help us get the word out and let the households know that it is confidential information, that the only thing that we release is statistical data. And we released that statistical data to the president on December 31st so the reapportionment of funds can go out. So that is the only thing that is released. And it is kept confidential for 72 years, is how long that we have to maintain that. And Title 13 requires us not to release any personal identifiable information. For us census workers, we have to take an oath. We could be fined $250,000 or five years' prison or vote if we release any information that is identifiable to a household. In 2010, over a million children in the United States did not get counted that are under the age of five. That affected school lunch program, it affected the Head Start program, it affected WIC, it affected SNAP benefits. So census dollars affect things in your communities like roads, it affects schools, it affects hospitals. So census data is very important. And the dollars follow data. They don't follow the need, they follow data. So there may be a need in the community, but if the data is not there to support it, then the dollars will not flow to that need. So that is why this is so very important for the community, everyone in the community to be counted. And as you can see, in Union County, the response rate for 2000 was 76%, for 2010 it was 77%. That's good, that's good, but we did not get every household to respond. So a good job on that. But for 2020, we have to, you know, we're asking the community, asking you all to make sure to, that work with us to get a complete count and so we can count everyone that is in the household. And how do you do that? The way to do that is to form a complete count committee, that of community trusted voices that will have events, have, they will create a plan of anything that may be, they'll look at anything, any obstacles for a complete and accurate count, they will create a plan to address that, those obstacles, and then they would put that plan to action in the community. And if you vote to form a complete count committee and vote also to create a proclamation that would state that you will form a complete count committee, once that is done, I would, you know, the committee chair would contact me and I would do training for the complete count committee. They would create their plan, present their plan to me, and then how they're going to go forward with their plan. And also, for any social media that you have, there is a sheet in your packet that looks like this, that's on your right-hand side of the folder, and it gives all the information about how to tap into social media information, how to put the census logo on your website, how you can use the census logo on material that you utilize to get the community to be aware of the census, anything like your Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, anything like that. And lastly, like I was stating, we send out workers in the community to go door-to-door, and we are hiring. So there is a census flyer that gives information about the hiring. And right now, the jobs are salaries, and they are part-time temporary jobs, and the salary's ranging from $14 to $18. So an hour-plus mileage for that person that is hired as a census employee.
So you recommend as a municipality that we post this on our Facebook page, on our website, and anything else that we're supposed to do as the city?
Well, what we're asking is that you would create a complete count committee, and the complete count committee for the city would work to, you know, find out any obstacles and work through those obstacles. As you see, the map on the front of Mississippi on that right-hand side, Union County, they did pretty good as far as response. There is some yellow, but it's mostly like a cream color. But still, like we said, 77% still does not mean that there was a total and complete count.
Right. So when is this committee need to be formed, John?
ASAP.
Okay.
Because the census, as I stated, is coming up, and, you know, it takes some time to get a committee together, to get the groundwork, and some suggestions for those that to serve on the committee that are trusted voices are like someone from the school, someone from the local businesses, someone from the restaurants, someone from not-for-profit organization, you know, different areas in the community that are trusted voices that can help get the word out.
Okay.
Any other questions?
What number would you say? The more, the better, or five people, or seven?
It would take a little more. Most of the committees have 10 to 16 people because there is like, you have subcommittees. And those, the subcommittees consist of faith-based, you know, someone with the faith-based community to be able to reach the churches, someone with the healthcare that can be able to reach healthcare, and just someone from different areas, and then you have those subcommittees. So how, so you can cover, you know, those trusted voices that's in these different areas, it would take about 10 to 16.
And once the committee is formed, should they contact you?
Yeah, they will contact me, and I'll leave you on my card. And they will contact me and whoever the chairperson, because they would need to have a chairperson on that committee. But it would take a vote from you all as a city council to establish a complete contact, I'm sorry, a complete count committee, and also to do the proclamation. And I can email the proclamation to your city clerk, frankly. So, thank you so much. And will you all want to table it or let me know what your decision is later about voting on a complete count committee?
I think table it tonight, I mean, this is my opinion, just to wait and see what the feedback is from the community, and then we'll discuss it the next meeting, is that okay?
That would work, and you all can just give me a call, or you can designate if you want your city clerk to give me a call.
Just email the city clerk that proclamation and everything that you need, and then we'll talk about it next.
Committee don't get paid.
No, no, sir. There are volunteers from the community to ensure a complete and accurate count. And there, in your packet, there is a complete count committee brochure and also a complete count committee timeline that's in your packet.
So, Tim, excuse me, have you all had a committee like this before? So what have you done in the past when we did a census?
I never asked for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda is a public hearing for budget fiscal year 2020. Anybody here got any concerns with 2020 budget?
We're just setting the hearing date.
This is the year. You gotta be a friend with this.
We're not gonna meet about it again? I mean, I think we need to meet about it again.
Yeah, we can do that.
So?
All right, we're gonna make, Johnny, move forward to the second table. What do y'all want to meet? When can you meet? It's gotta be within the next 12 hours.
Okay. I can meet any day except this Thursday.
Everybody here keys next week, weekend, today? All right, what's up? What's your favorite? 10th, September 10th and 5th there. All right, everybody, any other questions or concerns? Kevin, Dave, you good with that?
Yes.
All right, Donald in favor?
Yeah.
Any votes? All right, next item is a public hearing for 415 Oxford Road, R3 to seat 2.
Mayor, the owner decided not to move forward there.
All right, next we got Bob Ryan with O'Ryan. Bob Barber, I mean.
Mayor, Board, I come here briefly, just to give you an update on where we are with New Albany Next. My intention was to be here last meeting, I was out of country, and could not make it. I wanted to follow up with our planning week, which occurred in late July. Remind you of our process to develop the updated city plan and then the following zoning code after that, and whatever else comes out of the process. We go through a discovery process, then there's where we're studying the community factually, which we've done. We go through a direction process where we gather input, which we've done. Many of you participated in that, not all of you participated in a lot of that process. And also included in that was our planning week. When we were here in July, we had our whole team here. By the way, Oliver Sebo, some of you met Oliver, he's evacuating St. Simon's tonight. Something about Oliver, he was supposed to be with me here tonight. That was a part of the direction process, getting input on goals, directions, where we're headed with the concept of New Albany Next. And now we've moved into the third phase, which is, we call it a design phase. We were actually writing the plan, you hadn't seen us or heard from us, we hadn't drawn too much attention to ourselves because we're working on a draft plan. And we will be back with that in the not-too-distant future when convening the steering committee group again and then begin looking at the details of actually what the steering committee wants to bring forward to the board as the plan for New Albany Next. If you'll recall, the way we structured the process, the community picked out five areas that sort of typified the development issues facing New Albany now and in the near and distant future. Those included the medical district area, thinking about that interstate intersection and the whole section of the community there. It included the northside neighborhood, which typified infill, back to the older neighborhoods, how can they be carried forward, revitalized, reinvested in, so forth, so that was infill. The Carter Street corridor, we looked at because it typified the many corridors that you, several corridors you have throughout the town that are commercialized and how do we generate investment in those and make them as good as they can be. Then we called out what we call a new neighborhood. Now, we picked down here south of the Walmart area, but any new area, like there's an intersection, the intersection south of town on 15, there's other places eligible for new neighborhoods, we looked at that, designed provisions for those. And then the last one was downtown in the river, the very core of New Albany, looking at the river and how it interfaces. Without going into the details, and the plan covers the entire city, but we can pick out those areas and find the issues in those areas that broadly apply to other places. So that was the intention there. Planning week concluded with a really nice gathering downtown. We did the presentation. It's on the website, newalbanynext.com. You can go, look at the presentation, refresh yourself if you want to. Let me say this, I've already attended New Albany many times, and I'll continue to do so because the energy in the community is so good, the potential in the community is so, the underlying fundamentals of the community, I'm talking about statistically, are strong. And then the engagement in the process was very, very strong. We continued, lots of hits on that. I proved two comments on the blog last night, and, you know, people still find it, look at it, and give it input. So that's just an indicator to us of, first of all, the need for refreshed planning in the community, and what you've elected to do in pursuing the project. And it's an indicator of how people love and care for New Albany. So, I said I'd be brief, I'm probably pushing the brief part of it, but I will say that we are working, in the background, we will be bringing material to the steering committee and ultimately to the planning commission and board in the months ahead and to move the process forward. Finally, the plan, once we get a plan, draft plan on the table, we do, don't want to lose sight of fact, we'll be re-crafting the zoning code to align because it's covered in the plan, and many have asked about that, and that's in the process, that will be at the end of the process. Questions, comments, just update, anytime you have my cell phone, maybe, call us if you have any feedback with.
I have one question.
Yes.
So, in order, because the biggest complaint I get about the plan or whatever, it's like, oh, another plan that we're just gonna sit on the shelf, a plan, you know. So what would be the thing for us as a city to do differently this time with the plan so that we don't miss this implementation part?
Well, we already know you're gonna implement part of it when we redraft the zoning code.
Right, right.
So plans are implemented in essentially three ways. There's policies, that's your zoning code and other development tools. There's projects, how you invest your money, how you partner with other entities to generate projects, DOT or whomever. And then there's how the process is managed. So the plan has an implementation element that will address all three very clearly and strategically with roles and responsibilities. So knowing that the zoning code is gonna be rewritten and assuming it'll be ultimately adopted, there's implementation right there that won't occur. We have no interest in your plan sitting on the shelf, we want to see you implement It's simplistic to say, you have to pursue the strategies that are there, and we will provide ideas and implementations. And when I say we will provide them, all we're doing is reflecting what the community is telling us, that's what the planning week is all about. You can be assured that when we lay New Albany Next on the table, and after you've done your vetting of it, it will be a reflection of what people are interested in seeing happen in the community, and it just simply has to be implemented. I hope I answered your question.
The management part, you said the plan, the projects, but then the management, that would be us managing it, or do you recommend?
Well, there's a variety of ways of managing the process, certainly through your own planning commission, the process is managed through your own staff, people, and maybe particular partnerships that come out of the process. We're not there yet, we hadn't written the implementation, so we gotta get there.
Okay, got it.
All right, any other questions?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, this is new department of business, light gas and water.
Mr. Mayor, I guess first of them, we have to spend a little money. The first one is, actually, we're getting money back on this first one, through your request for cash number nine, Marshall County Gas Project, that's $39,000, $695.52, that's money coming back to us from the free ribbon department grant.
I got most of my wheel, I have a second. Kevin, David, any other questions, discussion, all in favor? Any votes, most curious?
This second is a favor request for U-Banks Construction, amount $128,050.8, that's what worked completed last month.
Got most of my Johnny, I have a second. Second by Keith, any other questions, discussion, all in favor? Most, any others? Discuss, most curious?
Then I have a favor question, Cook Cog and Engineers, they're part of the work on the project, that's $10,707.84.
Most of my Keith, I have a second. Second by Amy, any other questions, discussion, all in favor? Any votes, most curious?
And that's probably good proceeding, pretty good, we're always ups and downs, you kind of get nervous in the middle of it, but we take this all and come together right around the first part of November, which is when we need to, right at the time for the equal seats to start. Our service contractor, who finished up the service line, he's gonna be there starting tomorrow, and I'll get all the gas station components being fabricated, and once they get there, it won't take long to install it, and I got an update last week, and all that sounds good, so we feel pretty good about our time schedule, getting that implemented up there. Yeah, thanks. Another item, we talked a couple of times about buying a trencher for the gas department, and we looked at some big trenches trying to order new ones and different things, and anyway, we have found a walk behind trencher, it's actually used, trencher, we got a couple of different cloaks on it, one ditch witch out of Memphis, it's a C16X ditch witch walk behind. They had one for $13,675, and then there was a group, it's Thompson Machinery down here, they have one for $7,629, and that's one we'd like to buy. It's just, yeah, we think it's, we're still gonna at some point need to get a bigger trencher, but this one, we compared this one with our mini X, but they, we think that's a good price on it. We'd like to buy the one from Thompson, this is Thompson equipment and building.
Most of my Kevin, David, I have a second. Second by Will, any other questions, discussion, all in favor? Any votes?
I want to thank, have, Mayor, I've gotten a contract document from TBA to review our contract with them. I reviewed them, and then Chris Mitchell, our consultant, the Health and Swift Electric rate financial items, he reviewed as well. They looks good with the contract, and I'd like permission to sign that contract with the city.
Yeah, most of my Amy, I have a second. Second by Will, any other questions, discussion, all in favor? Any votes, most curious? All right, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Community Development, River Best.
All right, hang on, let's have a brief overview of what's about to happen on River Best. It kicks off Thursday, the 25th, 6th, with the Literary Luncheon that the Union County Heritage Museum puts on. If you've never attended this, it's a phenomenal event that brings people from all over. It's just a phenomenal event that New Albany has. So that's the Literary Luncheon. Friday, we're partnering with this year with the City of Ripley to help them tell their Faulkner story. The great-great-grandfather of William Faulkner was actually shot on the town square of Ripley. And so this year, we have two grants that's going to be funding the Tale of Two Faulners, that's the Mississippi Heritage Hills and Visit Mississippi. So Friday night, we'll have a storytelling competition in Ripley. We'll have three representatives from New Albany and three representatives from Ripley going head-to-head on eight-minute storytelling that will be judged, and the dinner will be, it's a ticketed event, and dinner will be served on that. Professional storytellers will also go into city schools in Ripley and New Albany at the fifth grade classes, and they'll do a storytelling workshop for fifth graders on the art of storytelling. Saturday, it continues, we will take a, we have Barclay Buses Reserve that will take our New Albany people to Ripley to do a cemetery tour and do, there's about 10 stops in Ripley that are associated with Faulkner, and they'll do that, and then the buses will come back here. So that's the Tale of Two Faulners, it's a two-day event, Friday and Saturday, and it is all funded by those two grants. Saturday, our part kicks off with the BNA Run, 8:00 that morning, it's the 30th anniversary of that BNA Run, so it's building back up after kind of a lull, after we switched that, those October dates, that BNA Run is building back up. We'll have a vendor market right on Bankhead with an ARX Market and vendor market. We heard from the merchants downtown, and they wanted that pushed back to the downtown streets. The Kids Zone will be at the Farmer's Market for a $10 wristband, your kids can jump until they cannot jump anymore, it's an all-day event geared towards the younger kids, but for $10, they can jump all day. And then at night, the music starts at 5:00, we've got Tom Bigby Divide, which is the Bluegrass Band, we've got Natalie Stovall, which is an up-and-coming Nashville artist that was recommended, and then Thompson Square, who have had several CMA Awards in the early 2000s, will be our headliners. So it's really three full days of events on that. Any questions? Sounds good, it's going to be good.
Thanks. Please, Paul.
Evening, Mayor and Board. I need to hire tonight, we have open place department, Big Will Cherry, to go full-time employment, he's been working with us, he worked for us previously, he's working with us part-time now, he's moved back in the area, and I think he might get a bit of place for him.
I most of my Johnny, I have a second. Second by Kevin, David, any other questions or discussion, all in favor? Any opposed, most curious?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board.
Where does Will Cherry replace?
We had a resignation earlier today from one of our officers.
That was?
I'm not trying to avoid you, Mr. Jerry, I just don't know if I can speak on personnel issues, I'd get some heads up on that.
Thank you.
Fire, Paul.
Nothing other than a quick overview on the civic center, we got all the additions done and the repairs done, and we come down a little bit on her plate, so.
That's what always good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Clark, since.
I sent you all the month of report. We had a request from R18 to rezone a property located off Popper Avenue from R2 to C3, and it was approved by the zoning board. I'd like to set a public hearing for October the 1st.
All right, I'd most of the, set a public hearing October 1st.
I got a question about this, which, it's a long story, I'll try to make it short, I don't know, you know, are you under the bus there, but you weren't here, there was, they've been asked to been rezoned, was it nine to 10 years ago, 10, I believe?
Yeah, at least, yeah.
But changing that from residential to commercial, and had previous building inspector, we had a previous zoning planning commission, had a previous city attorney, there, all the residents of the neighborhood signed a petition, saying opposing it. There's not access from Highway 15, have to come down Popper, which is an air road anyway, can't really hold the traffic that's on there. It was denied at the time, I think by the planning and zoning and by the Board of Alden. There are pretty stringent rules and guidelines on reapplying to have a request to have it rezoned once you're denied a request. And in my opinion, it shouldn't even been applied for for a request. I don't know, let Reagan make a legal decision on that, but I think it's, there hasn't been a, there has to be a significant change.
You're right, if there's a burden they have to meet, then that requires proof to be their mistake or a change in circumstances in regard to the property of the neighborhood. But I think they are entitled to ask for the hearing and address that question, and that burden has to be overcome before they're entitled to the change. They have to have the hearing, they have to do that. I don't think there's a timeline on it, I don't think you necessarily have to do it at the very next meeting. I did, Mr. Barber just left, I guess, did have a question for him, if he had interest in that change, given that they're looking at things at a citywide level, but I do think we'll probably have to have a public hearing somehow.
Yeah, I'd love to hear, he did mention that intersection, residential, planning and development, that intersection, that's in my ward, my constituents don't want it, I would, I think it needs to remain residential because of the access restriction, you have to come in through a residential area to get to it. The city's lacking residential development, we need more of that. If we have to set a public hearing, I would say that we want to put it two months down the road and look into that further, get with Orion Group, instead of saying, or if you're looking to see if we even have to, say we have to, instead of, instead of in November.
I think you have to, I just think that, you know, before you get to the question of what is the right thing you're doing, you do have that threshold question of, has there to change the character of the neighborhood, or they don't get to the second question.
On November or November meeting?
Yeah, that's fine, if you want to make a motion for that.
I don't know if minors to you or not, Will, but you're correct on that nine or 10 years ago when they had a petition, but there was also a presentation, maybe three or four years ago, where they didn't formally go before the Board of, I mean, the Planning and Zoning Board, but they did have their legal counsel representing them here and made a little presentation about it and didn't do anything on it. It didn't go through the formal process, but they came and talked about it three or four years ago. I believe it may have been Bill Rutledge that was representing, no, it wasn't, it was up there. He's from Pontotac, I believe, got white hair, tiered and a goatee, can't remember his name.
I don't remember what, yeah.
I seen him last year.
It was last year, Mr. Williams.
That's why I see you.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I'm also in Wardport, and we have no business on this side of town, everything is moved western, and we need new business on our side of town, Wardport. And if you go to the west side of town, you got houses all around, commercial properties within 150 feet. And you know, I think the best plans for our ward, what the city and New Albany is, to put new business in on our side of town. I mean, a lot of sick business there and bringing in tax dollars, and we would still hate buildings.
There is a lot of opportunities for mixed-use type with the Orion's approach that would be less heavy commercial and more of a community type thing that's mixed-use, that in my opinion wouldn't be a terrible fit for that particular property. If it went just straight, big box store, commercial, I could see where you'd have some issues for sure.
One more thing is that they're not looking at going all the way down Popper, the exit and the enter would be right next to the bank right there, as far as going all the way down Popper, no. Actually, you'd be going in by the store and by the bank, it's not going all the way down Popper as far as the track, as far as drug traffic and things like that. All right, anybody else?
One more comment. I mean, US 78 is now an interstate, and there's 2,000 some odd feet of frontage on that interstate. If that's not a change in circumstances that meets the standard, I don't know what is. The second thing is, is alluded to, this works in several other parts of town, commercial, residential, Magnolia Hill, JB Dodge, where Mr. Johnny lives, you look at the other, over there behind Hall Neely, it works in other parts. Nobody wants to convolute the neighborhoods and ruin people's property, but what are the tax revenues on that property now, and what could they be? I think we need to look and see what a compelling governmental interest is defined as.
Tax base to increase significantly, if it was developed, I don't know, I'm not a developer, but it's just on residential, there could be 60 to 70 houses.
Nobody's going to build a house on that interstate.
Terry's building some right on the side of the interstate, 50 feet.
Which my comments were neither for or against, from a developer's, you know, looking through my glasses, it is not a bad piece of property for a mixed-use, commercial, residential or residential. Your big box, huge parking lot and one or two tenant-type facility, that would create some access issues. But I do believe Orion Planning Development would be very interested in seeing some mixed-use type development there, where you get a mix of professional business and light commercial that blends into residential. That kind of plays into the whole connected, connectability and walkability of the approach that they're going for, which goes back more towards the traditional development patterns that you saw in cities before the 60s and 70s. You know, the whole point in their approach and the way they look at it is in the 60s and 70s, the suburban concept of everything spreading out and moving away from city centers and having concentrated commercial areas with these big buildings and huge parking lots. It was a very attractive development-type process to go through in that particular period of time because we had the space to do it. What they're seeing and what other cities are seeing is that when you go with that development approach, what you wind up doing is tying up large amounts of property that are in city limits, that are in prime locations, that are nothing but parking lots. And so you don't get a good use of the land that you do have in the city limits. Their approach, if they were to look at it based off of, I was there for that Planning Week, and I spent about 30 something hours with them during the day that week, and then went to all the meetings, and you know, their kind of concept and what they're looking at and what you're seeing in other places is taking those inner-city areas that are being filled with nothing but big box stores and huge parking lots, and making it more of a mixed-use residential, commercial-type development, where you get both, where you get the connectivity and walkability to be able to go from your house and walk down the street and eat at a restaurant, or go from your house and walk down the street and go to a little local grocery store, this or that. And so from a developer's, you know, set of, or view looking at it, as someone that is building houses next to the interstate, we don't own that piece of property, but if we did, I'd be coming to you and asking you for a rezon that would allow for mixed-use, and we would be going personally, if we owned that property, more towards a, you know, like I said, mixed-use, commercial and residential development. And there are ways to set that up to where you use your residential areas as buffers from existing residential areas to the commercial areas, and then you use your professional business and your commercial areas as a buffer from the highway to the residential. So there are ways to set it up to where you can maximize the land use as well as profitability for the developer and the profitability for the tax base, but it is something that, if we owned it, we'd be asking for the same thing. Now, I don't know with the particulars on what specific type commercial they are going, requesting for.
I have a C4, then they pulled it a couple of months ago and asked for C3. C3 is too much for that. Well, look, I have a question, sorry, I have a question, so if we're going to C3, we have a lot, in order to ensure, like right now, if we just changed it, we don't, we, our codes don't really allow for this mixed use, so there's some changing and some things that have to take place for us to protect our residents in that area. So, and I know we're headed there, we're headed there, so that's kind of some things we've got to talk about as a board. So if we could maybe wait like a couple of months, just to get some more, like we need to talk to the Orion Group, we need to see how we can, because I think if the mixed use sounds great, but it's not, right now, it's not, we don't have it set up that way so that we can put anything there, and we want our residents to be happy, and we want commercial to be happy. I mean, I think we want every, you know, I think it's, I could see it really developing into something like you're talking about, walkability, that's what we want, but I think we've got to wait till we've got the right thing in place. I don't know if we can wait, I don't even know if the law allows that.
I think if it was presented in a way that not only the local residents, but y'all could actually have something to physically see, master plan it, which requires spending some money, and it's not a small amount of money to get the layouts and things going, but it is very influential.
Sorry, who owns it right now? He's not here, right, you're on the other side of the house?
He's sick, he's himself, man.
Oh, okay, so does he have plans for what he's going to do, or?
Yes, he actually developed this property, it was just a ski hole, brush, tree, he actually cleaned it up, made it presentable, he keeps it clean with the hopes of having it rezoned for businesses.
I have the listing on it, and had it on the market for three years, and had one or two, one or two nibbles and that's it.
For residential?
Because it, no, for anything.
For you?
Because it's a commercial property, zoned residential, and...
Sorry to interrupt you, I'm not sure we got two months.
Right, right.
He's got stage four colon cancer, this needs to be voted on. We're not going, we're not going to wait two months.
Two months, a long time.
We're not going to wait two months, we're going to move on it before then. It's not going to be state court, we're going, we're going to have to do something. He's ready to settle his affairs.
Yes, sir.
And I wait two months, that's unacceptable.
Well, to answer what you, response earlier about, I agree with you fully about commercial property in that area, and that's slowly changing, all of that, I would think, behind Pilot, on the other opposite side of the interstate, that is only commercial, right there, that is available for somebody to build.
He don't own that.
I didn't say he didn't.
That's the furthest piece of property in New Albany to me, I mean, that's really, you look at it being thrown left, and you're looking at that level property, I mean, it's ideal for business, I'm not talking about a hall for him, so I'm not a nice person, maybe doctor's fault, anything.
It's not a quarter mile from the interstate, it's frontage.
It does not have frontage to Highway 15, is the problem, access.
It's got 2,000 feet of road frontage on I-22.
But you have to go through a residential area to get to it.
Cracker Barrel, don't either.
Sorry.
Cracker Barrel, don't either.
A lot of these comments today are really things that belong in the public hearing, they're about whether we should do this or whether we should not do this, and the only real matter today is about setting the public hearing. But I do want to touch upon what you said, and others may be going into as well. The only thing we could do right now is approve a change within our zoning codes, whereas my understanding is, Mr. Barber has a tentative plan for that area, which would involve codes that don't exist right now, so I really do think you want his input on this.
Well, I want, I'd make a motion up here for October 1st, and see if we can get by October.
Do you have a motion on that?
I'm hoping for November or November meeting, so.
Oh, there you go.
Give us time to research, get with the plan.
Get us time to research and get with the plan.
I've got a motion for November, old meeting again.
First Tuesday in November.
Much. November 3rd. I have a second. Thank you.
I mean, we've got to set a public hearing, right? They just made the comment that they don't think they have to. I won't understand why we can't have a public hearing. I'll hope to.
All right, time for a lack of a second on November. Johnny makes a motion for first Tuesday of October. We'll have a second on that.
Well, so what happened with the November? It didn't?
We didn't get a second.
Okay, so I'll second that.
Got a second for October. What's your date on that? First, October 1st. Any other questions or discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Most curious. We'll have a hearing October 1st.
I'll help you research it, Will.
We can get Bob. Get Bob before anything.
Yeah, I think he'll come back.
Thank you, Albert.
Yeah, I mean, because we're doing all this city planning and so we want to make sure that, I don't mind it selling, as long as it has the codes, it's going to take.
Right, but the problem is that the codes aren't going to happen until, after.
I know, so how do you do that?
Well, I think he would give his input on what he thinks it should be zoned.
Yeah.
And a piece of property can sell with incorrect zoning with the.
And then change it, yeah.
With the hopes of being able to get it changed. It's not that it's not possible for it to sell.
We just need to figure out, yeah.
It may be canceled.
So October, we've got it.
If it were master plan where there was some, easier to tell what you could do with it, it may have helped it sell a little faster. But that takes spending some money and it's not a small amount of money. To get a master plan on that bigger than that, it probably costs 10, 15,000 dollars.
So it's public hearing in October?
Yeah, will be October 1st. All right, Eric, you still live. I took care of three and five.
I don't know.
Yeah. So 1504 hours of circle.
The 1504 hours of circle from Patrick Littery had a request for a variance for accessory building setback in the rear yards was agreed.
So some both. Yeah, what about the zoning board member?
I guess, is that not in the old man there?
That's old man.
I don't have any.
The next one's only board member.
The zoning board member was Chad Payton.
Regan, me and Chad Payton, that's our board. Make a motion by will or have a second. I think it was Johnny. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. All right, now approved demolition on 6th, 3rd South.
Okay. The.
I may heal this.
Yeah. Well, I need to take that off because I made a mistake.
Both of them off?
Well, 702, when I asked permission for 702 Parrish to collect the demolition things, which was 1,500 dollars.
That's to assess it over taxes, is that right?
Most of Kevin Dale, have a second. Second, second. Johnny, any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Most curious.
Can you state what that amount is because minutes due means second?
It's 1,500.
15,000.
The last one I hope, likes a public hearing for October the first meeting of the houses at 1029 East Bankhead and two or three common circles for doing the structure.
I was with Johnny at the second. I mean, of course, most curious. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious.
1,500 when it gets approved. I had a lot of conversation.
Yes, it did.
Thank you.
I can't believe you'd be confused.
We apologize.
All right, let's move to general city business. Adam A is to approve or correction of plane's docked for August of 2019.
I had two on there that I talked Frankie about today. I make a motion to approve it of the notes two that I gave her.
All right, we're going to start to do that first and then go back to these two. What are the two?
One of them was hanging baskets, sound pretty poor. And the other one was a TRS bill from back in May, which was. TRS bill from back in May for 408 dollars for tree trimming bag.
408?
408 dollars. That was for pretty poor landscape, hanging basket, that was 1300, 1300 dollars for 36 seconds.
All right, so we got a motion to approve all except those two. We'll have a second.
Second.
Second, Kevin Dale. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now let's go back to these two.
Let me, can I, that's the first I've heard of it. And I have a question. I'd like to maybe do an executive on at least one of those other. I don't know anything about. Before we all address those.
Okay. I'm going to take those with me, executive. Okay, Adam B is to approve August 6th, 2019 minutes. Most of Johnny, second. I mean, any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. Adam D is to accept assessed valuation for 20, no, I'm sorry, let's go back to city. We do that. That's approved August 15 minutes. Most of my will to have a second. Second, McKee. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Adam D is to accept assessed valuation for 2019, 2020. And that's most by Amy. Have a second. Second, Johnny. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. Adam M is to accept tax levy for 2019, 2020. That's good, went down a little because assessed valuation and I heard it was single. No tax increases in there. Most of my Amy, second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Adam. Yes, the Highway 30 starting traffic light update. I don't know what to say. It's not a breeze. Do I want us to board upon it? Adam A.
I'd like to recommend that we nominate or approve Ren Nelson to go on the school board. Ren's been in New Albany for about 15 years. He's, his parents were both in education. His mother-in-law's in education. And right now on our school board, we don't have any school board members that have children in the school system. And I've kind of gone back and forth on that, whether you need them or you don't, but I do think you need a little bit of a mix. So I think Ren being on the school board would give us that. And then also, like I say, he's got a history of education in his family. So I'd like for us to.
Thank you.
Thanks for this. It's just our unit.
Sir.
Yeah, I got a motion McKee to point Ren Nelson, second. By Johnny. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. And Adam I is to approve request for cash number 10, Cochrane Drive project of 88,258 dollars. Most of Johnny, second by will. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. J is to approve paid request number nine for Cochrane Drive to Michael Pittman, construction of 169,000. 674 dollars. Most of McKee. Have a second. Second, Amy. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. Adam K is to approve paid request for Cochrane Drive for the engineering solutions of 11,000, now earned 2000 dollars. Most of my Amy, second. Kevin Dale. Any other question or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Ward, I, A O, I guess that's you, A O, Ward, wanted to play around?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I have a little committee in my ward that has looked, has kind of ranked our sidewalks in Ward 1. We have, we're the walkable, pretty much my ward is very walkable, but we have a lot of sidewalk issues. And so we've just kind of ranked them and looked at them. And I've talked to the mayor and to Johnny Payton about this next year, starting to kind of figure out what we're going to do. It doesn't necess, some of them I don't think we necessarily need to repay. Some of them we might break up and do stone walks or anyway. So we're, I just want to make sure I'm telling my ward that publicly. And then playgrounds, we, Tracy Venisi has been working on grants for playgrounds and there's, along with the Orion group, I think there is a plan for, not in my ward, but in KD's ward, but it's right centrally located with the old community center. So we've got a plan in place kind of to work on a playground, which is exciting. And then, of course, street improvements is always something we talk about this time of year because we're doing budget. And my ward needs some streets, so just wanted to make sure I say that.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
I just received a report back from our M partners with the Ole Miss Parks and Recs Department.
Yes.
And they are in the process of finalizing a report about all the parks and playgrounds in this town.
Great.
And so it kind of coincides nicely with the Orion group. But you'll see very shortly what Ole Miss's park and rec recommends for our parks.
That's good. That's great. Thank you.
Okay, Adam M is cemetery maintenance, rebid advertisement.
Y'all want, y'all want to open it up for rebid? Could put that on there?
I think I'll put it on there because I thought, I thought that's what you, didn't, I mean, I'm just, can I ask you Reagan? Did you recommend, do we recommend to rebid it?
I threw several options.
You threw several?
So before I go into that in detail, I'd rather keep that.
Let's, let's just skip that one and take a look.
Okay, Adam, oh, we'll skip in too. That's what we just.
Yeah, we'll skip that. Oh, oh, that was me. So employee handbook, y'all, we've got, we've got to update our handbook. I mean, we've talked about doing it and we hadn't done it. So I just wanted, I want to keep it on the agenda so we can make sure we do it. So I'm not sure how we go about doing that. I just know that we've got to do it. So do y'all have any suggestions of how we go forward in that?
Mr. Bob, have any suggestions for us about this?
I don't know what, I don't, I don't know. I can ask him. I don't know if he does that kind of thing. Yeah, the question list one. Okay, we can ask him, yeah.
No, he'd probably have a recommendation.
A recommendation of somebody to help us.
Or at least one to mirror.
Yes.
Yeah, I think one thing, I mean, it's a work session where we can review our handbook we presently have.
And we've talked, you know, over the last year or so about making some changes in location and personal time, different things.
So we just need like a scheduled work session?
I think so at some point. I don't know.
Would y'all ask Bob when you, are y'all going to talk to him?
So, yeah, if it's okay with y'all, I just want to keep it on the agenda so we just keep thinking about it because we know that, we've been talking about it, we just haven't done it, so.
Okay, Adam P is to approve final order tax exemption from ABLO for VIP. Johnny works there, so he's going to accuse himself on this ABLO tax exemption. Got a motion by will, have a second. Second, McKee. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, most curious. All right, Johnny, come on back. Adam Q is considered executive session.
Mayor, before you do, can I, I forgot something.
No, we, uh. You had your time.
Hey, we need to order two trucks, two half tons because we let the parkland state contract. We've got some other parks that are needing some, we're about to do some house. I forgot the last two plus to ask.
Motion by will, second, Amy. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Most curious. The last item is considered executive session for possible, well, one of the possible purchases.
At least what matters is what, if those things, if there was already something on it.
Possible purchase, it won't even matter. Really.
So real estate seller?
Yeah, real estate, possible real estate purchase. All right, to have a motion to consider McKee, Kevin Nell, second. Any other questions? That's all in favor? Any opposed?